Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, October 20, 2020. This is a virtual special meeting of the Commissioners of Rehoboth Beach. I'm calling the meeting to order at 3 o'clock PM. We'll take roll call. Commissioner Susan Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Dick Byrne.
Here.
Commissioner Ed Schronowski.
Here.
Commissioner Jay Legree.
Here.
Commissioner Pat Calusi is absent today, and you've got Mayor Stan Mills here. We have a quorum and can conduct business today. Also with us on screen is our city solicitor Glenn Mendalis.
Everybody.
And city manager Sharon Lynn. Thank you for being here. Members of the public have signed up to speak, or Rick Perry and Carol Everhart. We'll be calling you at the appropriate times. And we welcome and thank you to all the others that are watching us live right now or tape at a later date. There is no correspondence for this meeting. I would like to share with you some information gleaned during the governor's press conference this morning. And that is that the positive cases in Delaware are starting to flatten out statewide. This is due to more testing in schools in different locations across the state. The governor is looking for the seven-day average, looking at the seven-day average, and it is higher than we want it to be, but not attributed to one geographic area. However, hospitalizations continue to be higher in Sussex County than the other counties. And again, the highest positive rate is here in Sussex County. So obviously, we need to continue to take protective measures, wearing face masks and social distancing. Want to remind everybody that unlike Lewis and some other towns, we have not canceled trick-or-treating. However, we have been asking people to follow the guidelines for Halloween festivities issued by the Delaware Department of Public Health. You can find that information on cityrehoboth.com, our website. Where you can also access more information on COVID response and how to access the state's dedicated website to the COVID pandemic. With that, we'll start with the meeting part of this. The purpose of this special meeting is to discuss strategies and path forward in addressing the COVID-19 pandemic, including business use of city public space through March 31st, 2021. I just want to say that, excuse me, that one big thing during this meeting is I'd like to retire the word "parklet." A parklet is a dining area set out in the street with barricades around it. I'd like to retire the word "parklet" and instead substitute "street cafe." And similarly, I'd like to add a new term "sidewalk cafe" for dining in those respective areas. With that, this program has been managed by Commissioner Patrick Gossett, and I'd like to turn the meeting over to him at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Mills, and thank you also for mentioning the change in terminology there from "parklets" to "sidewalk cafe dining." I think that is reflective of some of the comments we heard in the last few meetings and also talking to some of the restaurants and don't really understand what a "parklet" concept was. So I think this makes it much clearer and more defined as to what we're trying to deal with here. What I'd like to start off with is just kind of putting ourselves into a little concept of the phases that we need to face and decisions that we need to make with regards to the scenarios that are presented to us. And the first, I think, is what we're currently in now is the governor's, the current governor's state of emergency, and that is November 1st until March 31st. We know that's in effect, at least until that date. And during that type period of time, we have dining options in town for public or patio dining, which is in place for about 40 of our restaurants currently in the city of Rehoboth. And then they also, the concept of sidewalk cafe dining is what we have been had in place over the summer. But we've adjusted that somewhat with our approval of, by the mayor and commissioners just a couple of weeks ago, of some more guidelines about sidewalk seatings during that period from November through March 31st with the removal of the street barriers. The next possible continuation with the next second segment is the possible continuation of the governor's emergency orders, and that would be April 1st of 2021 until, to be determined. And at that point, we would also continue to offer patio dining, the sidewalk cafe dining, and the concept that we're going to be speaking about today, or actually, city manager Lynn presenting her recommendations about street cafe dining, formerly known as "parklets." And that would be the period beginning April 1st to an undetermined period of time if we have another extension of the state of emergency. And then the third scenario is post-pandemic. If and when this is over, we would have patio seating, sidewalk cafe dining, and street cafe dining if we decide to move in that direction. But what we want to concentrate on today, right now, is street cafe dining. I've also attached, for the commissioners, our current definitions of patio dining, of how it is codified in the city code. It lays it out pretty clearly with very specifics about size and definitions of area and what have you. I've also included the sidewalk cafe dining, as we determined and approved just a couple of weeks ago. But the concept of the street cafe dining, which city manager Lynn's going to be talking about in a few moments, I think is a much more complex than the existing patio ordinance or even the sidewalk dining. Because you're really going to be talking about specific designs, the size of the platform, structural dimensions, possible loss of parking, the cost to restaurants to build them, and the permit fees involved, licensing and approval process, excuse me, our ADA and health department and fire codes, and also the alcoholic beverage control commission and their input into this. So I think we have a consensus that street dining, street cafe dining is something that we wanted to investigate, and we certainly asked city manager Lynn to kind of look over what we had discussed the past couple of weeks and put that into a more operational mode and talking with her department heads and how to put it in place. And working with building and licensing and public works and the police department, communications department, city solicitor have come together with some recommendations, and you will have a copy of that. It was also part of the agenda today. So I think looking at this from the perspective of trying to create procedures that are fair and equitable and reasonable and realistic to all is the objective that we want to look at in going forward with the street dining, street cafe dining. So I turn it over to Sharon Lynn for your discussion and points bringing forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Gossett. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Yeah, so after your last meeting, I did get together with my team, mostly everyone that you mentioned, Commissioner Gossett, and we were able to put our heads together and come up with several, not only dimensional requirements, but we thought a lot about what the future could and probably will bring. Just want to emphasize that this is for the, while the pandemic is in effect, so this is not post-pandemic, this is current and what we would expect through March 31st, 2021. And what you, and do you have this document, everyone? Was this given out, Commissioner?
Yes.
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 Okay, so Dennis, Jenny, and Howard Rothstein are on the phone. I think also, I don't know if they're in the room with you, but Howard, if you'd like to just give a little thought and advise the commissioners how the dimensional part of this was, how we came up with that.
While Howard's getting set up, I want to remind the public that these documents are embedded into the agenda that's available online through the city's portal. Howard, when you're ready.
All right. Hello, all the commissioners. So as far as the dimensions, what I did was I took the actual spot, and it's nine by 18, I believe, and I put like a one foot like right away, because if people build right up to the edge and a car pulls in, it'll be way too close. So the, where it says "maximal buildable" is again, an estimate of what I figured the platforms could be for like one spot, which leaves, that leaves the seven feet, leaves a foot on each side, to give you an idea, because most of our spots are diagonal, and it would be on a case-by-case basis, because we do have some perpendicular spots or, excuse me, horizontal spots, like in front of the pond. So it would be a different scenario, but the size would be pretty close. Most of my dimensions, I got out of either the building code or the ADA. Some of them I got from OSHA, as far as if you look down what's required for the platforms. The vertical differences, that all came from ADA. So these numbers are justified, and they came from a source. They weren't just pulled out of the air. That's as far as the platform requirements. Again, this is just our recommendation. It could be modified with your suggestions, and suggestions would be greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Howard. Yes, Commissioners, we did need some form of a guideline for you. So this is what we came up with, this is what we think is safe right now. If you have had any time to look this over, we're certainly happy to hear from you.
A question with regards to Howard, you had mentioned about this, the aspect of these buildable dimensions, and I think on the, in the memorandum there, you're referring to about lines 20 through 38. But some of those are, you said, derived from ADA and from OSHA. So those are dimensions or criteria that we really can't bury from because of they are the specific ADA or OSHA requirements.
Well, as far, as far as the platforms, I use public school math, and that's how I took the nine feet by 18 feet, and that, and it's like 15.58 feet is the actual, what if you go perpendicular out from a parking spot, that's what it would go. But I just rounded it to 15 feet. To give that little, it's like a six-inch buffer that will be there, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah. Well, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Legree.
When I, when I got online, started reading about what other cities require, did you think about putting any kind of a barrier, albeit a low barrier, like those concrete movable curbs that you see in parking lots, to place inside the platforms to prevent cars parking adjacent to running into the platforms or the, or the structures? And, and also on the traffic side, do you anticipate putting any low-line concrete buffers there to keep folks who are driving by from running into their, to the platform? I think other, other towns are requiring that, or Seattle and some places where I looked at, they do, and some places were requiring more than one foot of buffer. I assume that you could increase if you want, that these are just minimums. Thank you.
No, when I, when I looked, I went and found DC, because they actually have a parklet manager.
Yeah.
And so their sidewalks and their curbs and everything, they have like 10 feet of space, where we don't have that much space. They were actually, theirs, they have a four-foot buffer going around the town for traffic, but their traffic is moving at a good clip, where we're about 25 miles an hour. And the chief mentioned that a barricade, not necessarily like what we had, the water filled, just some kind of structure.
Yeah, those, I noticed that some cities are using those, those concrete things that you put in parking lots as a little buffer to keep folks from, from driving into the, into the platform. And also, I think that towns that are using them with horizontal, like in front of the pond and, and on our first and second streets, and are also having buffers between the horizontal, God, I can't keep from saying "parklets," between the horizontal street cafes, and, and those are bigger buffers with more space to keep folks who are parallel parking from running into the platforms. But it sounds like you've considered those things, so that, that probably answers my question just fine. Thanks.
Thank you.
Stan, I have a couple of thoughts, very much, very similar to what Jay just said, because that, I guess my first reaction when I read about the rails being capable to withstand a 200-pound horizontal force, well, that's a person, not a car. And, you know, I do wonder a little bit about that, and even though people may not be driving on Rehoboth Avenue as fast as they're driving on a street in Washington, 25 miles an hour is not nothing, and, and sometimes if there's not traffic, they'll go faster. So I just, I do wonder about that a little. I think I've seen, in addition to the barriers that Jay mentioned, I think I've seen, maybe, maybe it was Alexandria or Arlington or Virginia or something that had poles. So there was some sort of, something to stop a moving vehicle if one should, should be out of control, I guess, for lack of a better word.
Well, I think that, Susan, I think that's a very important distinction. If the majority of the commissioners think that there needs to be significant barrier capable of stopping cars, we need to resolve that right now, because that's a significant difference in departure from what was presented last time. But remember, what was presented last time was by Sharon, the city manager, and our chief of police, that we're okay with less substantial wooden railings and fencing and things like that. So that, so again, if anybody else is concerned about the type of barrier, they need to speak up, you know. Again, this is for pandemic conditions. And if we went for something beyond the pandemic, then we might require something even more substantial. Still want it to be safe anyhow, regardless, but maybe there's a little forgiveness during the pandemic right now. So I want to get any more thoughts before we move on.
Just a question with regards, we talked a couple of weeks ago, or last week also, about the street side, street cafe being on the actual asphalt. I think Commissioner Schronowski brought this up, versus an actual building platform. So with the, if we're talking of protection or barriers or planters or railings or something, are there a need for a different style of protection on a, you know, asphalt level versus a, a platform level? Or are we still considering both types of opportunities for a street-side cafe?
I'm not sure how to answer that. I will say that in reading through some other municipal ordinances relative to street cafes, they indicate that whatever, whatever method you use to build your platform or place your dining area out in the street and install barriers, that upon removal, you must restore the street to its original condition. I would think, I would think that possibly building a platform and fastening your four-by-fours to the edge of the platform could give a strong enough railing system, whereas if you don't have that platform to fasten to, you might likely have to have something very substantial, such as a concrete jersey barrier, to just sit on the asphalt, or you have to penetrate the asphalt with fasteners, and then, of course, you would have to fix it. So I don't have a good answer for that.
Is that something we should ask staff and the chief to explore further? Or I guess the clear question is, do we want to go with the two options of a, on a platform and the option of going on the asphalt, or just go with one option only?
Ed, unmute yourself.
My apologies. My preference would, to leave the option up to the businesses. I think you'll find that most will not want to do a ramp and have the seating on the asphalt, because that just takes up a lot of room. That's, that's definitely going to take away from table space that they're able to have, but I would still leave it up to the business, knowing that I think having the platform and either a barrier built off of that or planters on top of an eight-inch or 12-inch high platform is going to be safer, I think, and that certainly would be the preference, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't mandate that it has to be done that way. If, if a business wants to get, you know, one of those temporary ramps or something and put out there, I, you know, I, I don't think we should stop from, from doing that either. I just might too, so.
But, but if we offer them that option, which, you know, we certainly can go down that road, I guess, based on staff and the chief's recommendations, but I think we should then lay out specifics about bollards or, you know, barriers or something of that nature with regards to, as you said, it, on a platform is, is maybe a little more protective than just right on the street. So giving direction specific about safety options of automobile traffic and what have you, I think is incumbent upon us to give those design standards for the restaurants to build what is safe for the, for the guests.
Mayor, may I comment?
Yes, Sharon.
So again, I just want to remind you, and I know you know, but this is through March 31st. I don't think there's going to be a lot of outdoor seating through the pandemic through March 31st. If the pandemic continues after March 31st, then obviously, whatever you come up with now for the pandemic will be in effect. Post-pandemic is totally another story. I mean, we're doing this to help the restaurants and some of the business owners, but post-pandemic with an ordinance created by the commissioners is a little, we have a, another conversation for that.
Well, I want to highlight that, underscore that, Sharon. We're not ready to talk about post-pandemic. That is a totally different animal. We are talking about during the, during the pandemic, up to May, March 31st, following the governor's emergency orders. But also, I think for me, I'm looking at this as likely being applicable beyond March 31st, as long as the pandemic continues, that these would be the rules. Why? Because if a restaurant wants to contemplate doing this, and they want to do some planting, planning over the winter time, then I think they ought to know what the rules are into the end of March, but also beyond. Let them make assumptions, like we might be, that this pandemic could very well go one, two, more months into the summertime. And then that's, that brings me to, if we're ready to talk about costs, I still think we need to talk about costs, because again, if a restaurant's going to use the winter time for planning and decide whether they want to do this, I think they ought to know that if COVID, the pandemic extends in the summertime into the parking meter season, then what the potential costs, if any, are going to be to them. So I don't know if anybody else, if Pat was here, she would still likely be pushing, you know, as her position has been, to hold off on discussion of fees and parking meter, which I've stated my position, but I'd like to get your, your opinion. Commissioner Gossett?
Mayor, I agree with you in the sense of trying, as we at the city doing budgeting for the future, if we can lay out some, some plans, I don't know how specific we can get with specific costs or dimensions or what have you, but to give the restaurateurs a baseline as to what investment they would have to make, either to create a parklet or a street cafe on a, on a, on the street itself or on a platform, what costs would be involved? And I think city manager Lynn, you've, you've given us some estimates of cost out there. I know this is based on the current aspect from now until March 31st, but those could apply. I think there's a couple of comments in there about post-COVID-19, but would you like to kind of open up that discussion a little bit on cost going forward?
Mayor? Commissioner Byrne has his hand up. We'll go to him, and then you, Commissioner Schronowski.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I have two questions. Back to the previous discussion about platform and/or versus the asphalt. I'm wondering if the city commissioner and her team discussed that, and if there was a, a strong preference for platform only or, and/or giving, giving the business with some guidance, obviously, the option of choosing a platform or, or the asphalt.
You said, "city commissioner and her team." I think you meant city manager.
I meant the city manager, yes, thank you.
Yes, the recommendation from staff would be definitely a platform. We need ADA access. And, and just to make them all, anyone, any restaurant who wants to do this, make them somewhat uniform.
Okay, that's, that's helpful to know, because you've all been working at this and discussing this. So to the, to the current question about, about post-COVID costs and all that, I think it's fair to let restaurants know that indeed, if this were to continue post-COVID, that there will indeed be costs associated with it. Now, and we may not agree immediately exactly what those costs are, although I see what the recommendations are here, but, but it's certainly fair to let, let the businesses know going forward that the situation will be different post-COVID.
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not sure we want to get into post-COVID now. I'm looking at during the pandemic and if the pandemic extends beyond March 31st. Why? Because the formula for asking for compensation for parking per space might be different during ongoing and extended pandemic situation, different than it would be post-pandemic. So again, I'm trying to focus right now on pandemic and extended pandemic. Commissioner Schronowski, did you have?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to suggest that, that we've, we finish the topic of the structure and platform before moving to fees, but I, as long as, and I misunderstood you, Mayor, as long as we're still in a pandemic, I do not think we should be charging any fees for this. Post-pandemic, I, I think that's a different story, once we're out of a state of emergency. But to finish up the, the structure and the platform topic, I'd like to, I, I think I'd like to understand from I think I'd like to understand from this staff because it seems a little subjective that it needs to withstand 200 pound horizontal force I don't think I or probably any of us know what what that means or how that's determined so I I'd like to just ask I guess there's an example but there's one business on Rehoboth Avenue that already has sort of a built sidewalk cafe structure assuming that something like that was placed on top of a you know eight inch tall wooden platform is that sufficient is is an example of that sufficient I guess is my question.
Well let me let me rephrase Ed if I can and ask Howard again to he already mentioned it but he can reiterate it where did the where did these figures come from and number two how do you determine what the load rating is of a railing are you able to determine that?
Well both the load of the platform and the load of the railing is an OSHA requirement so I pulled it off at OSHA.com or .gov and again these are these are my recommendations this is our recommendations and but it's supposed to withstand a force so I think that's where they get it from.
And I I'm fine and I completely understand that I think how do we explain to businesses how to figure that out what is how they've built something whether it can or cannot withstand the the 200 pound horizontal force is there a simple way to determine that?
Well you know if you're building a deck at your house or something you know you can design it yourself as well as an architect but there are certain parameters and building details that you use to achieve the load ratings and I imagine that if you have a neophyte designing something that building and licensing would perhaps be willing to sit with them and help them design something you know calculating what what we have down the street the the wooden fence type thing with planters that you described can probably be calculated as to what its load rating is depending on how it's constructed that's my opinion. I you know if you're trying you asked us to try to resolve platform or not platform if we had more time I would direct the building and licensing to do a couple illustrations one would be a single spot two spots and three spots with ADA ramps down into them to get you to the asphalt I think you would be surprised at how much space is required for an ADA ramp you cannot base it in my opinion on the asphalt ramps that the city installed they're not ADA compliant in my mind you have to have a level platform at the top a certain turning radius you have to have a minimum or maximum slope to get down in there that's liable to consume most of most if not half of your single parking space especially as the parking spaces are noted here to have a buffer all the way around them now if you went to two and three spaces that might be better but I don't know ADA enough to know that within a confined area if you'd even have to have two ADA ramps out of there do you all know I'm looking at building and licensing no?
I don't know Mayor but I could find out.
Well we'd have to check so based on that I I'm amenable to the recommendation of the building and licensing folks to require built platforms for the different reasons cited.
If that's the recommendation of the city manager and the staff I'm fine with that I think we just move forward with their recommendation.
Commissioner Gossett and then Commissioner Gay?
Just a question on this to Dennis or to Howard in the information you've given on dimension requirements and what have you and you deal with builders all the time and also individuals that want to come in and do something in their home is this enough detailed information that someone could take it either to a construction company or to Home Depot or Lowe's and talk with them about the necessary materials to purchase with regards to cost there and then labor and what have you so that that a restaurant could determine how much it was going to cost them to physically build this platform irregardless of city charges or what have you which I think we're all in agreement that that would be waived during the pandemic aspect. Dennis or Howard is still there?
Yes I'm just trying to so what if you go to like number 42 the approval process it was to you know we were asking for both contractors would have a good understanding of what they need to do to build a force system and and what kind of materials they would have to use to you know just through experience but I can come up with a more formulated you know the de Joyce what what the spacing needs to be.
Well I I think that we have to be flexible in that I'm not sure how much you can set standards because some platforms might only be six inches high some might be 12 inches high depends on the location and it depends upon the the slope of the street or something the different different conditions I'm not I think you can do something but you're still going to have to work with them.
James by case.
Mayor I I agree with that everything that we've seen having been out there last summer with you know there are different dimensional requirements and we were trying to throw something together for the purpose of having the restaurants open for business then we wouldn't be looking for you know necessarily to have measurements taken and but again we would want uniformity so at least some of that looks looks the same and of course safety is of paramount importance for all of us.
Thank you Sharon Commissioner Gay Commissioner Shonasi and Commissioner Gossett?
Yeah first of all backing up to you know the recommendation about the platform versus on the street and also about the the weight or the force of the rail I certainly want to go with what the city manager and her staff recommend on that for both safety as well as as construction I mean they're the ones that have been working on it the longest so I support that 100% in terms of the costs I agree that we really don't need to talk about the post covid costs until a little later you know in the budget process or just a little later in the calendar and if I if I'm reading this right it looks like the only current cost is the $20 permit review fee right so all other fees have been waived is that correct?
I would recommend we waive the the fee as well.
Permit fee as well okay yeah I'm just wondering because it does say the permit fee is on there and I you know again I'd be fine with that too because it's 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 not very much but I just wanted to just verify that all the others are set aside during the covid process right? That's all.
All right thank you Commissioner Shonasi and then Commissioner Gossett?
Thanks so I I think I may have misspoke before and I wasn't I wasn't talking about the the load bearing of the platform I that's that's easy peasy to figure out what's more subjective is the force of an object coming the 200 pound force that would be coming you know towards the railing with the people so I think and I agree with the the city manager we don't want to go overboard on measurements and and huge designs but I think just giving examples that are sufficient to the businesses would be helpful such as a 100 pound shatterproof planter spaced every two or three feet is sufficient a two by you know a four by four post every four feet with with a fencing is sufficient I think those are the types of examples that the businesses would understand and they can go to Home Depot and say hey this is what I need to do but I unless we get examples I wouldn't know what what would stop a 200 pound something from hitting hitting the railing so I think that those are just the examples that we need to be able to provide so people can do an analysis of whether it's worth spending the money or not to set something for themselves.
So much like what we did presently there was a hand drawn diagram that was presented to building and licensing if this was out in the street certainly we'd take a different look at it but we would work with each individual restaurant to come up with what is appropriate because you're right Commissioner Shonasi that what what does that mean so how do we define that but like we would do before we would work with every individual restaurant that's the key takeaway from here because we're not you know large enough where we don't have the the time or the staff to do that with you know 40 restaurants or less I think that we could get that done with them.
Thank you Sharon Commissioner Gossett?
Yeah just a question and again to give the the restaurateurs some concept in on the sheet here line 25 I think it is is total buildable total buildable areas nine by 15 and a half which works out to about 140 square feet so is there a average cost per square foot of buildable a deck or house construction or commercial construction could that be equated to say if it's a hundred dollars a square foot this will cost you $1,350 to build a platform is that is that a ballpark estimate of way to to approach this to give the restaurateur some kind of concept of of cost building cost or Dennis or Howard or anybody else that has built a house lately?
Yes sir we're going to have to do some research on that and talk to some of the contractors we deal with to try to get a reasonable cost per square foot before I tell you right now what it would be.
But would you feel that that would be kind of additional information that that would be helpful to the restaurateurs to kind of make that investment decision?
Yes I agree with you.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah I've got a question Mayor and and Sharon and you know I I'm really satisfied with the work that the city manager and her team have done on this and it seems like we could spend weeks more just going deeper and deeper into the weeds and and doing more research and getting more data and information that that maybe wouldn't be helpful to the restaurants and the businesses and so the point has to come where you know we trust our our city staff team and we and we give the information to the businesses and it's their responsibility to figure out some of these things and to work together so the question really is what Mayor what's our timeline to kind of wrap this up and be able to hand over the information to the restaurants so they can proceed on this before you know the weather changes so fast that it's not even a viable practice for them going into the fall the late fall winter?
Well I don't have any timeline we're just we'll keep moving forward my expectation though is that likely the restaurants will be coming to wanting to do this come February March timeframe and that's why I think it's so important to have the rules set and established with the note that if this goes if the pandemic is extended beyond March 31st and these rules still apply Patrick do you have a better grasp of timeline at this point?
I think that's why we're we're been meeting weekly is to establish these and and I think city manager is correct that we are not going to have a lot of interest in these immediately just because of the change in weather and change of business patterns and unfortunately as you mentioned that there's been a slight spike in covid in the Sussex County area so that may hold people off also for outdoor dining I hope not but that's just the way the things are right now so but I think that to try to to look at it from a user standpoint that you know the current standard is through March 31st of the covid emergency order from the governor and right now we've set aside patio dining and the sidewalk cafe dining to be in place until that period of time and if we can establish some of this street cafe dining currently for people to implement it between now and March 31st is fine but I would think that the user again the restaurants are more interested to have this type of option to to either build or make a monetary decision whether it's worth the investment to do for the coming season because if we're still in the pandemic then restaurant seating inside is going to be reduced so to expand their number of seats to either equal to what they had previously is I think the important thing because you know your your electric bill your rent everything is still the same the only thing that changes in this equation is the revenue coming in because your seats are are less so what we are trying to do is allow them to increase those number of seats and this is an option to it I don't think business is that strong in January and February so the restaurants are really going to be looking towards this to spring to put this into place so if we have a concept in place with some guidelines design guidelines cost guidelines by mid November or the first of December that could be implemented as a test case if we wanted to if anybody's interested to do that in January or February or December might be a thing but I just believe that the real interest would become in spring when business hopefully increases and comes back to a seasonal activity but to have you know the information in place to say can I make this investment are my revenues by adding another 30 seats outside or what have you is that going to offset the the investment of building this thing staffing it purchasing additional chairs and tables and whatever is needed to accommodate this street side dining that just just my approach on it.
Thanks Commissioner Gossett you know I I think I I understand much of what you're saying I understand why we're doing this it just seems like the timetable that you laid out is kind of at a snail's pace I I don't know that there are not restaurants that if we kind of wrap this up in the next week or so wouldn't want to move on this in November and I don't know how much more information they would need than what we have here and the opportunity to work with our city team so so I can't say that that there wouldn't be any restaurants that
Just saying
Unless we have some very specific data or feedback I know that that Main Street hosted a zoom call about a week ago and while there were not a lot lot of restaurants on that there were several and those that were on that you know one guidance right now you know as soon as possible and I know we're working at that but but they they don't want us to hold off a long time they want to be able to plan and get things in the work so.
Well I would I would it's great to hear I would hope that they would come forward with that information either through an email or some type of information to so that we know what's going on.
Well look I I believe that we could could possibly wrap this up today and then approve it at the next Tuesday in the meantime I would suggest any restaurants that are interested in this concept to look over the information and express their interest to the city so that we can get their thoughts on it but also understand how many might want to go forward with such a thing now Now, uh I think I think the problem is that the city manager has indicated one reason for removal of the barriers, of course, is uh to to finish the rental contract. But another reason is winter's coming and we want to allow clear passage of snowplows and everything. And and so is that contradictory trying to expedite this for restaurants to set up street cafe? And yet we would have to say if they put them up, then they might have to take them down right away. So I I think we go as fast as we can. I think we're doing our due diligence. I appreciate the pace that we're going because I think we are being very smart about this and trying to look at all the angles and do it right. We've asked for the city manager's opinion and her team at this point, uh and I'm very appreciative of that. We've got Commissioner Lagree, Commissioner Chenowski, and Commissioner Gay have raised their hands. And at some point, I want to take a break and go to the public. Commissioner Lagree?
I think uh I think we should remember what uh city manager Lynn said last week and that we're looking at bad weather and to get the snowplows through. The people need to think that they can't probably can't go through November with uh with a uh a structure that's that's out in the street. So I believe that the people who are listening to us right now, the business people, the more information we can get, I think they're thinking in terms of of forever, and I think we should too. So the structures that they build, I would hope that they would be able to keep using those structures for the street cafes until next November fifteenth. And that's going to be a significant investment for them. Cost, I I've checked this stuff on the internet. Costs a lot of money, and they're going to have to build structures that can be taken up and stored through the winter before they can put them back out on the street again the next uh when the next season starts. So the more information we can give them now that they can use forever, I believe is is helpful. So I'm 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 interested in giving them all the information that that we can and that we know and to help them make a decision for the long run. And I think they're listening to us right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Chenowski and then Commissioner Gay?
Um I I agree um with with much of what's been said. I think most people will um look to the the spring as this being an option. But I do know there there are some businesses that come November second, when the barriers come up, they're going to want to utilize this. Not a whole lot, but but there's definitely some. And I I do think that anyone that that is going to invest in building this, they're going to want to make sure that they can take it up and reuse it and store it. And I um so I, you know, I I think that would be part of the messaging is if we're not going to allow them to keep it up all winter, um you know, give them some some guidance so that when they're constructing it and thinking about design, it is something that can be maybe built in smaller check sections and and taken up and stored. That's all I have.
Well, I I yeah, Susan gave me neck, but again, we've uh there's a note in here on one of these pages about seasonal operation at April one to November one. So we do have, I believe we have established some seasonality to this. Commissioner Gay?
Well, yeah, I I must admit I'm a little confused about the timing. I wasn't sure whether there were any restaurants that um were planning, needed this information November second because that's when the barriers come down. I I have heard different things. Mostly, I think what I've heard is that there may be a few. And so for that reason, I guess I I in in terms of what the weather will allow, it seems to me that there's as much time in November and early December to to enjoy the outdoors as there is in February and early March, you know, before the end of the COVID. So e- either way, you're talking about a short period of time, but but the February, March timeframe is certainly no longer and may even be less. So I I you know, I guess I I was under the impression that some might want it now and that that we would want to, you know, make make that possible. You also mentioned, and I'd forgotten that the season, uh if on an ongoing basis, the season might end November one. So, you know, that that that's an interesting um wrinkle too. But you talked about wanting to wrap it up today, which I I totally agree with and to also uh, you know, give them uh guidelines to to go forward on. So I guess one question I have is, um if we wrap it up today, would we be voting today? And if so, are we voting on the sort of general parameters? Or are there are there still details we need to work out or what?
I I really look at this as a continued introductory talk about this, so I'm not ready to uh entertain emotion. You know, uh uh don't forget also that, you know, the street cafe is a dining option. I think we're all interested in giving restaurants dining options. But they also have the option to set up tables against their storefront. So don't forget that that's that's available too in our last policy. So we've gotten a couple of different policies going there.
And that's what we're doing already, right? That policy, that's available to everyone today, right? The again, the the tables against the building, right?
Correct, I believe so, yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, that's good.
So so you know, as far as the policy that's that's in front of us now, that's embedded in the agenda that Patrick did, you know, I I think I'm a medal of everything. The one thing that is unresolved uh are the cost of parking spaces. If we want to entertain it. Mr. Gay, what?
No, I just said that's not an issue now. So that's something that we have, as I said earlier, we have sort of time to work that out because the parking spaces and costs.
I'm I'm gonna let it go, but but I still say that we should do it sooner than later so that these restaurateurs know how much it's going to cost them if they invest in the platforms and especially if it goes beyond March thirty first. If there's no other comments, then we're gonna let it go. It was what's here for now. And Patrick, you you want to uh take the lead on on resolving this and then going to the next step?
Well, I think what I I what I've hear from fellow commissioners is that there are some thoughts that that there's an immediate need from some restaurants. And I'd certainly like to hear if there was a um, Commissioner Byrne, you said there was a Zoom call last week with um Main Street participants. If we could get some details on that of of who is interested so we could reach out to them directly to say, you know, what what is your what is your need, what is your concept, this type of thing? I know it's kind of cart and horse here, but I I think to work hand in hand with the restaurants and their needs and and desires to to balance that with what we can do from a construction and safety standpoint is is imperative. And to roll it out as quickly as we can is one thing. But, you know, it's 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 a learning process on both sides so that in working, if I can work with the city staff and city manager and our solicitor to come up with uh some, if you will, applications or further guidelines, that type of things to present in a week, depending on on staff ability, staff availability, um I I think that's the way to move forward. But it would truly be interested that if there is, you know, specific individuals or restaurants are out there that are interested in this to come forward with their with their wishes to be known so that we can better address them.
Sharon, did you have a comment? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So if all you have to do is ask Dennis. Dennis went out, um contacted each of these restaurants, either their manager, their owner, and they didn't have a good answer because they didn't know. They might want to stay open, they might not want to stay open. It's it's going to depend on the weather. And my question to the mayor and the commissioners, the the barriers are going to be removed in two weeks. So if we have a very warm November, is it your expectation that anyone now, any restaurant now who has a street presence on the sidewalk will uh be permitted to keep that? Or will be um required to then go in the street with these recommendations? That's my question. Because in two weeks, the the barriers are going to be gone.
Well, according to our policy that we established in the last uh three weeks, the barriers come up, the pedestrian ways are vacated, the handicap ramps are removed, the tables on the sidewalk have to be removed except for one row of tables up against the restaurant storefront. Uh and that's and and of course, then they're allowed to have heaters, et cetera, per that policy that was proposed.
Okay, and I understand that if that's um the expectation, then certainly we'll we'll enforce that. I um again, just going back to the fact that uh some restaurant owners, many of them were undecided as to whether or not they're going to stay open or not. Dennis, do you want to add to that anything?
No, that pretty much uh covers it. Uh yeah, when I did talk to the majority of the restaurants, uh whether it was in person or via phone or email, you know, they're they're hoping that they can stay open uh just to make up for losses uh from this year. However, most are realistic uh in stating that, you know, when the weather comes, we're not going to be outside.
Thank you. Uh can we can we pause a minute and let's open it to the public? We've got Rick Perry uh on board and also Carol Everhart of the Chamber of Commerce. Rick Perry, please, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. Thank you very much. I do think it's important, you know, that you're discussing this now. And the one thing uh I think that is critical is to be proactive at this point in time. And I do believe that restaurants, like any other business, and particularly in the midst of this uh COVID pandemic, uh you know, are really going to be looking hard at their budgets. And I'm sure for them, just like for the city, uh that process needs to begin very soon as they plan for next year. And I do think they need to know what they will and won't be able to do whether uh the COVID uh emergency declaration is extended beyond March thirty one or not. And uh so I think it's important to formulate now what they can do in either scenario uh so that they can plan accordingly. And I know uh just in talking with some of the restaurants, you know, uh managers and owners that I know, I mean, some of them have been buying, you know, the outdoor heaters and all with an expectation of trying to stay open as long as possible. You know, even into the end of November or so. And just judging it, you know, by what the weather conditions turn out to be. But I think they would certainly like the opportunity to be flexible and have the city be flexible as well in allowing them to utilize the outdoor space. So again, I think the most important thing is to have both options on the table. Uh I understand that it may be difficult to pin down the number in terms of the cost per parking space. But I think even giving them a general ballpark based on your best estimate at this point uh and making it clear that it's potentially subject to adjustment uh after the city gets through its budget process, uh I think at least gives these uh restaurants something to work with and plan uh rather than, you know, having to wait until March thirty first and then, you know, scramble to try and figure out what it's going to cost them and what they can do or not do. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Rick. Carol Everhart?
Okay, can you hear me now? Yes.
Yes, we can, thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. First, uh what Rick Perry just said, I would agree with. They are looking for pricing. I would also agree that there are, many of them are very undecided. They're hopeful, they're hoping they can stay open. They need the financial assistance to do that. The weather is going to play a key role in that. So we're all in the unknown category on that. Offering an additional option of the decking, not the asphalt, but the decking, I think, is an option that may be possible now, may not be possible now. But if it is an option, it's something that would be um useful in the future. There are ways to do that, that it can be taken up in sections. I think uh Mr. Chenowski mentioned that. That would be one possibility. But I do like, if they do the decking, you know, you're you're unifying it and you're simplifying it, but it's one thing. It's not either or, it's one option. Um and I especially appreciate it, I think, um city manager Lynn said waiving the current fee that's in place right now. We have a lot of unknowns. You you all have a lot of unknowns right now. But I do think um what you've done so far, they seem to be pleased with. There is interest in continuing through the winter if they can. That's it.
Thank you, Carol. Commissioner Chenowski?
Um yes, I just, I'll first by by answering the city manager's question, uh it is my expectation and hope that when these barriers um come down on November second, particularly um those businesses that are utilizing the barriers as pedestrian walkways because they're they're using much of the sidewalk, that they have this option. I I think it's important, um it could be a lovely, it could be a lovely November um with nice weather. It could be that way going into the beginning of February or uh December, rather. So to the the city manager's question, um it is my hope that that we would have this in place for at least a month or six weeks worth of utilization.
And that's why I asked the the question, Commissioner, because I I wanted to know what the expectations are. So seems to me that um there's not consensus on that.
Yeah, I that's that's my uh my.
Well, it it's certainly my hope as well. I think I articulated that earlier, that restaurants would have that option as soon as possible.
I I agree. Secondly, um just to, Mayor, you 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 spoke again about fees. If the the pandemic uh were to be expected, I appreciate that the city managers, you know, suggested waiving the application fee for these street cafes. And like we did this this year, if we're still in a state of emergency and uh in a pandemic, uh I certainly would not charge the businesses any fees until such time we are out of that. So that's my thoughts on that. And to uh comment on Commissioner Gossett's question about the the Main Street Zoom meeting, I I I had a Zoom meeting with Main Street and some of the businesses, as I often do. And there's there isn't any consensus, there isn't any um similarly to uh Dennis found the answers he got is the businesses just want to to be communicated what they can do, what the options, what they can do and what the options are. No one knows whether they're going to be able to, everyone would love to stay open if it's if they're able to get heaters and the weather is nice, but we don't know if the weather is going to be nice. A lot of places don't know if they're going to be able to keep staff. A lot of places are trying to get heaters but not sure they're they'll have heaters in time. A lot of people are concerned that the, I think, some of the supply chain issues uh was related to lumber. Are they are they going to be able to get lumber to do this? So I I you know, I I think we just need to prepare and give the options for the businesses. And they will have to make individual decisions based on on whether supplies are available, whether staff is available, whether the the weather is nice or not. But I think we we owe it to them to provide the option. So uh those are my thoughts. And I I do appreciate um Carol always has a, she always has wonderful um perspectives. And um I was, I could go either way on the on having the uh using the asphalt or the um platforms. But um like Carol said, uh kiss consistency and keeping things uniform is is always a good thing. So I I do agree that just making the the platforms mandatory is is more a thing. Thank you, Mayor. That's that's all I have.
Thank you, uh thank you, Ed. You know, we have uh, we seem to have. Uh, thank you, Ed. You know, we have, uh, we seem to have contradiction here. One is that November 1st, the contract's up for the barriers that are going to be removed. However, on the other hand, that requires tables on the sidewalk to be pushed back in one row against the storefront. Uh, however, the contradiction is we have the restaurants that, that want to retain their full tables there until it gets so cold that they have to abandon the, uh, the dining areas outside. Uh, is there a possible way that we can contact those businesses that might want to stay open a little longer and utilize the barriers that we, the city have bought to line their pedestrian ways to extend some of these a little longer? Or is that complicating things?
Uh, no, it's not that complicated. We actually have, uh, several of our 50 barriers that, that we now own, um, up at existing restaurants. Um, I believe mostly along Wilmington Avenue, maybe some on Baltimore. Um, but as, as long as we can utilize them, we will, but we only have 50 of them. So we'll, we'll do what we can. But, you know, that's not to say we can satisfy everyone if the weather cooperates in November.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to think of a way to accommodate the restaurants that want to stay open later, might be able to stay open later. Uh, and we utilize our barriers, so change that policy and let them go a little longer. Uh, including if we had to rent a few for, what? I mean, it wouldn't be for a full month, probably. Uh, I'm willing to consider that option.
Well, and we'd have to, you know, go back to the increased cost, uh, if, if you're in agreement with that to rent them.
Right, right. That's, that's, that's the thing. Uh, Commissioner Legree?
I believe the first thing we need to find out is how many restaurants will want to continue after we remove the, the barriers? Number two, how much, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, City Manager, did I cut you off?
No, no, I, I thought, uh, we kind of went over that. Uh, we, we don't know at this point because it's weather dependent. Many of them said, you know, even restaurants that aren't normally open, they might stay open. Because if the weather's nice, they want to recoup some of those losses.
Yeah, and number two, if, if it's 24 November and we have this many restaurants on the street and we have a snowstorm coming, how many days do we, does it take to get them off the street so we can get our snowplows through? And number three, uh, I would be in favor of post-pandemic a fee of about 75% of a parking space for a season, which would be 3,000 bucks for parking space.
We're not, we're, I'm sorry, I cut you off. We're not talking post-pandemic yet. I don't, I don't think it's wise to, to talk about that.
I, I understand, Mayor, but we are talking about people trying to make plans to build street dining modules or frames or whatever forever. And it would be a little bit helpful if they could know about what they were going to have to look at going, going forward as they design their street structures.
Well, I, I disagree with you that they're going to be building things that go forever. We do not know what the rules are going to be post-pandemic. Then, you know, right now during the pandemic, we suspend a lot of the rules. Uh, and it's easy to get things done and, and we've overlooked, uh, different things, capacity and stuff like that. But during the pandemic, things, uh, post-pandemic, the rules are going to change. We need to have more rigid rules. Uh, things will be black and white and, and it just, I, I would disagree with continuing discussion about post-pandemic rules until we, until we actually choose to enter that discussion in the near future.
So I am then to understand that this document with the, uh, requirements, street for street cafes, the platforms, the strength, the approval process is just, might change, might change altogether once the pandemic's over.
Absolutely. Right, a lot of it, a lot of it mostly not. You know, if you've got, uh, the platform requirements, most likely they're going to transfer, but there could be changes to size, to cost, to different things that I believe need to be uh, part of the conversation in the future when we identify it as a time for conversing about, uh, post-pandemic restaurants.
Okay, then the folks who are listening to us right now, trying to make that decision should, should factor that in. Uh, that's all I have.
You know, uh, go ahead, Patrick?
Uh, yeah, I just, to go, to go back to that conversation, to try to, to complete it about restaurants that are currently operating and they want to continue to operate. About two weeks ago, I just did a, a walk-through town and looking at that specific. And by my calculations, there's 115 barriers out on the street currently. And there, uh, the, the restaurants that are using on a Rudy's Cheese Shop, DeFibo's Jam, Shorebreak, Mariachi's, Green Man, Parrot, Zalantro, Blackwell Hitch, Robin Hood, Indigo and Claws, that are, have barriers that are out in the street. So am I, our conversations are to approach those restaurants to see if they want to maintain those barriers up until a certain set of times that they're currently operating that way and others are not, or is there any thoughts of going forward with that or? City Manager Lynn, any, any thoughts? I mean, I don't know that we have in stock 115 that we own or but it was a lesser number, but that, that's what I counted. Now, it may have changed in the last two weeks. But those are the, the issues to, the, the actual restaurants that are using, utilizing them at the current time.
Shouldn't we just focus on this street cafe policy and move that forward and let the city manager and her staff deal with talking to the businesses and working out the details?
Well, I, I don't disagree with you there, but the policy that we have in place right now is that the barriers to be removed and the seating against the facades. So if we need to make adjustments to that, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I, I think that is a discussion point to, to have. And I look for direction, uh, on that, but that, I think that was the question before, as if I'm, I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the alternative option we should give people is implementing this street cafe um, option, which would be available to them as soon as we, we vote on it.
Well, how about if we do this? We have one dining option, uh, by the policy that was established upon removal of the barriers, the restaurateurs can set up one row of tables against their restaurant storefront. That's, that's settled. The other option is we'll finalize, finalize the street cafe opportunity, understanding that, uh, there's really not going to be any opportunity to install them until the first of next year after the snow season. And then the third option could be, uh, continued dining on the sidewalk cafes, uh, if the city manager gets wind of restaurants that want to do, do that and brings, brings to us the recommendation to maintain that. So I would say we leave that in her hands. Commissioner Byrne?
Yeah, I, uh, you just said that the policy on the street cafe would be to not, that, that no one could implement it until the first of the year? And if that's what I heard you say, what, um, why would we not pass this policy and say that one could implement it on November 2nd, when the barriers are removed? With folks knowing that if there's a snow emergency, that, that it has to come up for, for the, um, safety and, uh, and mobility of our streets.
If the city manager is amenable to that, I think, and the commissioners are, I think that would be fine. But again, right now, we have somewhat established that there are time limits on having the barriers out in the street. City Manager, would you be willing to, uh, go with Dick's recommendation? Or do you think that we ought to establish a rigid timeline for removal of everything from the streets?
Well, with the barriers and, uh, uh, you know, there are 115, as Commissioner Gossett says. We own, I'm just going back to that for a minute, we, the city owns 50, Commissioner Gossett. So, uh, Mr. Williams isn't there, uh, right now to weigh in, but I believe we're not using all of the 50. Um, I, I, I remember maybe 30, 30 of the 50 that we're presently using. If we were to use all the 50, we, we could certainly do that. The, it's not easy to get an answer from the restaurants, again, as to whether or not they're going to stay open. If we wanted to rent an additional, uh, 65 to make up for, to make that 115 number, we could do that, uh, based on what the commissioners vote on or say today. That's a hundred dollars, uh, a, um, each barrier instead of the $30 of the, we're renting them for now. Be much easier to tell the contractor, uh, suburban propane, that we need to keep those additional ones, but we don't have a, a real answer from the restaurants. So in saying that, um, yeah, I mean, whatever would accommodate the restaurant, restaurants, uh, with sidewalk seating, uh, your uh, street cafe seating, I think that's, that's fine with me. But it's a real safety issue, um, with traffic the way it is, uh, to just have a platform in a parking spot. Um, if they can, you know, even get that done in the next couple of weeks. So, uh, you know, we can take it on a case-by-case basis and, and confer with them. So the answer, my answer is, uh, yes, I, I would be amenable to that, to the restaurants, not just having the row of seating up against their, their businesses. But if it becomes a, a safety issue, then that's something we have to think about. We have, you know, a lot of different, um, uh, parameters there in place.
Commissioner Gossett, uh, any, any input on?
I'm, I'm just thinking if, well, I, I, I think further discussions a little bit with the city manager and her staff, if we feel we can, um, I, I don't know that, that what we have in front of us, we can really vote on because it's, it is, um, there's still a lot of, not a lot, but a, a few ambiguities in this. So I, I think we would need to come up with something a little more formalized, um, on this. Um, I can work with the city manager and, and her team to put that together and, uh, perhaps bring it back forward next week. Um, and that way, the restaurants that are operating currently that want to go forward will have something to work with. And if they can get it together, as, as Commissioner Chenowski said, there is, you know, I, uh, problems with lumber and, and contractors and everything, but at least, uh, we would give them some parameters of what to work forward with.
Well, if we could get, uh, the Chamber of Main Street to reach out to some of our restaurateurs and, and ask them, uh, uh, at least tell them about this and then ask them that if they're interested to, to, uh, uh, let us know, either let, go through the Chamber or the Main Street or one of the commissioners and mayor, let us know, uh, who's interested in, uh, period, and then who's interested in them immediately. Uh, so that we can have a better gauge, uh, interest.
Commissioner Gossett? Yeah. Um, so the, the mayor mentioned several times the seasonality of this street cafe policy as being, um, through April 1 through November 1st. Um, where, where in this policy is, is that written? I, I don't have those dates in here.
Well, that's one of the things that we had talked about previously of insurance requirements, licensing as agreement, signage, lighting.
I, I think.
Umbrellas, little trash, music, security of equipment, alcoholic beverage control and hours of operation. And I think we had come up with, um, consensus on all of those.
You're right. I was looking at, uh, I was looking at the city manager's document.
Sure.
So I would just ask that, um, that instead of having specific dates for the, um, for this, and the fact that we're really looking at it um, as a pandemic, uh, solution, that we leave, um, the, the uh, operation timing of the, the street cafes at the discretion of the city manager. Um, and, and she's going to take it as, um, there's, there's a bunch of different variables, whether, um, probably, you know, uh, that's probably one of the most important variables, but I, I wouldn't just say that, okay, it's November 1, um. I mean, for, here's an example. We, we, we said it would be from April 2 through November 1. And we're not, the pandemic isn't even in that timeframe. So why are we even talking about a policy that isn't effective until after the, 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 the current, uh, state of emergency is over? I think that the street cafe should be effective, um, November 2nd through such a time that the city manager sees appropriate based on weather conditions. Um, and then it, it'll start back up again in, in February or March, when the city manager deems that it's appropriate to start back up. And we may not have a whole lot of businesses start at November 2nd, but even if we have a few, there are little guinea pigs until until the rest of the town wants to catch on, uh, early in the spring or late winter. Uh, that's my suggestion.
No, I, 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 I understand what you're saying. And one of the options that is in our hours of operation is that seasonal, and the, the phrase that we have in here is seasonal operation, April 1 until November 1st, or based on the discretion of the city manager. To start it earlier or most likely in her conversations, if we remember, is to extend the season. Um, you know, through, if November's mild, through Thanksgiving, whatever, but it's at the discretion of the city manager.
Agreed. And I, I just, I, I, I just think that we should leave it open, um, of, you know, starting November 2nd for those businesses that that want to try it and, and see how it works. And I, I just want to make one other clarification. Um, Mayor, you mentioned several times about, once the barriers come up, the new street, um, the new sidewalk cafe, um, policies are in order. And you mentioned the one row of tables against the wall. And I just want to be clear, we, we talked very long and hard about places that may need an exception to that, um, that have very wide streets. And we all agreed that the city manager and her staff have the, um, the ability to make a set, exceptions to those rules. Um, so that they, they could have more than one row of table, um, like against the, in addition to against the facade, um, based on, on safety and, and what's available for each business. So I just, sometimes the, the newspaper takes little soundbites and I just want to be sure that everyone understands that there's exceptions to those rules that, that we've talked about and that the city manager has the ability to, uh, to do.
And Sharon, is that, uh, your understanding?
Well, no, I don't think you came to any conclusion. My understanding was either the up, the tables up against the building or, or not. So, um, that's not my understanding because I don't have, uh, clear direction on that.
Yeah, that was, that is one of the outstanding questions that we did not reach conclusion on because of that exact fact that some of the restaurants have a very broad expansive sidewalk. Um, and is it fair and equitable that, uh, you know, a restaurant can expand to a table of eight or 10 or 12 because they have a bright, broad sidewalk as to others are unable to, uh, you know, only use a two-top or a four-top. Um, so again, it's a sense of equity. So again, it's a sense of equity, being equitable to all. And maybe you just can't do that. I, I'm not sure as to. How to, to bring that to closure because even some of the restaurants that have a very large sidewalk may not be open. So. We did not reach a conclusion on that.
I, I thought that's, that's the whole purpose of having number nine, which was a catch ball. Case by case basis for the city manager to, to look at each individual business's ability. Based on the size and safety and, and everything else.
Mayor, may I make a recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
So give us a week. I assume you'll reconvene next Tuesday. And during that time in the next week, we'll go out, we'll. Count the barriers. We'll try to get some clear direction from the restaurant owners. To see if they're going to be up and running after the barriers are removed. And try to just, you know, take a poll as to what the restaurants want. Maybe they'll cut down their space, maybe they won't. And we'll come back to you next Tuesday with, with maybe some more information for you. I, I don't know if we'll get it, but we'll, we'll try the best we can. My concern again is if the barriers are gone. And we allow the restaurants, we accommodate the restaurants on a, you know. It could be very nice weather up until the end of November. If they're just going to put their tables out on the street or the sidewalk. You know, how safe is that going to be? And we, we, you know, we'll certainly give them some leeway, but safety needs to be paramount here also. Because you're going to have the barriers, you're not going to have the barriers there and you're going to have parking there. So, you know, somebody can pull into a space right in front of a, where currently they're being seated on the sidewalk.
Well, there's got to be that minimum five foot pedestrian pathway on the sidewalk. So that may reduce some amount of tables up there. Why don't we do this? Patrick, you maybe have your marching orders to, to try to help. Bring this conclusion, including the unanswered questions you have from earlier policies. And then we can bring this back and I feel, would feel comfortable that if we wanted to vote on this next time, that at least we've had this first opportunity. To be able to talk about it. Is there anything else you wanted to discuss today, Patrick?
No, I think we've, we've got enough to think about right at the present time.
Anybody else? Any commissioners, city manager? Jay, you've got your hand up?
I just want to compliment Patrick and the city manager on the, on the work they've done and the job. Really have my thanks and, and I'm done.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Shonowski?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I, I just want to, I asked Patrick. And I, I don't know a good way to phrase this, but I think. I think as we're, we're coming up to the end of the season and, and fall now. And particularly towards the end of the year. There are businesses that are either just going to close up shop completely or leave town and go out on the highway, et cetera. So I don't know when in, in our discussions here. We, we start talking about, well, what does that look like for the landscape of Rehoboth? What negative consequences is that going to have? For our town, but I, I certainly think it's, it's something that we need to start talking about at some point in these, these special COVID meetings. So we can, we can at least think through how that changes the landscape of Rehoboth if there is a, a good. Good amount of businesses that exit and, and forecast what can we do as a city in the next year to. To help, you know, utilize Main Street and the Chamber to help bring new businesses in. So I just think that that needs to be on the sort of a high level topic that we start diving into at some point.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I'd like to go to the public one more time, Rick, Harry and then Carol. Rick, are you still on?
Yes, I'm still here, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I, I just again, want to reiterate what I said earlier. You know, I think it's important to have both pre and post COVID. So that businesses can plan. I mean. Leaving them in a state of limbo, perhaps just five months from now, you know. Being optimistic that the state of emergency will end on March 31st. You know, who knows when it, when it, when it will. But notifying the businesses a week before we're no longer in a COVID pandemic mode. Of what they can do is not helpful to them at all. And I do agree with what Commissioner Shonowski just, just mentioned, something that I was concerned about. And I know that a lot of the members on the planning commission are also very concerned about. What the future landscape of the city is going to be. I, I've heard of many businesses that are planning to exit the city. Or just shut down entirely. And I think you need to seriously start considering what the city's going to do. To address that issue. And again, being proactive rather than reactive to it is the best approach in my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Carol Everhart?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. First, I absolutely will reach out to the restaurants and. All the information I possibly can and provide it to the city manager. I have two other things or three other things. I have a question over this timeframe. During the winter until March 31st, there is no need for the curbside pickup to either. Put on the meters a bag or purchase a bag. Am I correct in, and am I correct that they can have up to three spaces?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay, that's what I needed to know. And if they do, as we get into the season and the meters come into effect. Do they have to purchase the bags every day? They were asking me if there was a, it could be a simplified system. I said, I would ask and, and let you respond to that if not now in the, in the future.
I don't think that was, we had, we've come to any conclusion. We still have, you know, now until. May 20th or whatever next year to, we'll certainly talk about it, but I, I don't think we have an answer to that right now.
That's okay. That's the least I know. I got the right answer to, to one of that. Also, just for your information, the Association of Chambers, of course, meets every week. And we typically are on the phone with both Damian and Albert out of the SBA in the governor's office. Next, this coming Thursday, we have a conference call with the governor. And what we're really hoping for in some direction as to whether they're going to increase the capacities. The ask is for at least 75% across the board. I don't know how that will go, but I will certainly let you know as soon as I know that. And also the ask is. What would make the governor and those making these decisions feel comfortable? With not only moving to a higher percent or moving into another phase or an increased phase, that type of thing. So once we have that conversation, I'll certainly share that with you. And lastly, the occupancy, someone had asked me about the occupancy. Last weekend, you almost, you were 54% in downtown. That was very close to the same weekend last year. So it wasn't that it suddenly dropped. It, it does that this time of year. So you're at 54% for downtown and you nearly matched last year. So we were pretty pleased with that. Thank you for all you're doing.
All right. Thank you very much, Carol. Anything else by the commissioners? Patrick, do you have a path forward for us for next meeting?
We will have one.
All right. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 27th at 3 o'clock. We've gone through citizen comment and with that we will adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.